Let's call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, June 26, 2018. This is the Committee of the Whole of the Springfield City Council. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
By way of explanation, we had a power problem last night and our audio-visual equipment got hit. And our technical staff has been working all day to restore the audio sound. So, thank you very much for helping. And it's kind of ironic because had you not got the sound system up, there may have been a headline in the paper tomorrow morning that Aldermen were shouting at each other all night long. And the Chairman, McMenamin, was doing most of it. But at any rate, we got the sound system working. And thanks to the staff for making it happen. And so now we'll get back to our regular order. And if there's any problems with our video management, everything's good to go. So outstanding. Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Senor.
Here.
Alderman Turner.
Here.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Here.
Alderman Proctor.
Here.
Alderman DeCenso.
Present.
Alderman McMenamin.
Here.
Alderman Tyland.
Here.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, clerk is present.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the June 12 Committee meeting minutes? There's a motion and seconding discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. There be no presentations tonight that we know of. We'll move to item five on the agenda, which is ordinances tabled or remaining in committee. And those are 2017-103, 2017-266, 435, 436, 470, 489. And then in the 2018 series, we've got 005, 110, 141, 247, 252, 284, and 285. Any requests to take action on any of those ordinances which are tabled or remaining in committee? If there are none...
I'd like to move item 284 to the agenda.
Item 284 has to do with execution and arrangements regarding the Abraham Lincoln Presidential Library and Museum Internment Log. So we'll thank you. Alderman Tyland will take that up in order with the other ordinances for committee consideration. Any other requests for ordinances held in committee? There be none, we'll move to item six on the agenda, ordinances for committee consideration. Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Chairman would like to do the 218, 284 first.
Yes.
Thank you. 2018, 284, an ordinance authorizing execution of a deposit loan agreement with the Abraham Lincoln Presidential Library and Museum, ALPLM, regarding the Lincoln Family Intern Log collection.
Move to consent.
Second.
Motion for amendment.
Second.
I'd like to adopt proposed amendment number one, which I guess today had a technical change of as well.
Yes, that is correct. And what we circulated today, actually, that's what everybody now has signed off on. I don't understand these, so we have some circular.
Very good. So, motion to accept, amendment number one.
Second.
Discussion.
Is that the proposed amendment that was circulated by email?
Yes.
Okay. We've got, I think, an earlier proposed amendment, number one, that's now been superseded?
Yes, the amendment to the ordinance stays the same. There's a slight change on the attachment based on what the position received, diversity of driving, some slight language change, where we refer to the loan as a deposit, which we tried to accommodate.
So the word...
Go ahead.
So the word "deposit" is completely out of it, correct?
Well, not "deposit" appears, but it's clear that it's a loan and everyone has basically agreed that everybody says.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. What I was going to say is that the word, I think, "deposit" does appear in a couple of, my memory is, in a couple of the paragraphs. But there's other language that has been added to clarify or to make certain that there's no question that it is a loan, which was the original intent, and that's what everybody agreed to.
Alderman Tyland, you wish to add any further explanation or summary?
I believe that exactly what Mr. Zirkel is saying is the understanding of all the parties, is that the, any place where the legal definition of "deposit" is in here, it's already marked somewhere in the beginning of the document that the word "deposit" is referring to the loan of the book to the museum. So it's been made clear, which was one of the concerns that was shared by the different board members for Oak Ridge Cemetery. And once again, I would like to say that the Presidential Museum and Library has been fantastic about this for agreeing to store the book. We don't have the security or the other types of things at Oak Ridge or even available here at the municipal centers to protect the book, to protect this piece of history that honestly, if it were to go on the black market, I don't know what kind of price it could fetch.
Any further discussion on the amendment to the ordinance? There be no further discussion? All those in favor of the amendments signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it. We now move for consideration of the ordinance itself. Any further discussion? It's on the proposed for consent agenda.
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? If none, then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it.
CWLP, 2018, 286, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UE-19-03-11, outgoing in return envelopes for a three-year term with J.J. Collins Sons Incorporated, doing business as J.J. Collins Printers, in an amount not to exceed $143,903.10 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move to consent.
Second. There's a motion and a second for consent. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it.
2018, 287, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UE-19-04-19, portable dimineralizer services for the Dahlman Power Plant and Interstate Combustion Turbine with Suez, WTS Services USA Incorporated, in an amount not to exceed $1,250,000 over a five-year term for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move to consent.
Second. There's a motion and a second for consent agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it.
2018, 288, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UE-19-05-21, two double truck, double bucket trucks with Drake Scruggs Equipment Incorporated, in an amount not to exceed $383,614 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move to consent.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for consent. Any discussion? Alderman Hanauer.
Doug, was this, were these two of the trucks that were budgeted for, or is this additional from the budget?
No, my truck.
These were budgeted, yes.
Okay, they were part of the vehicles that came through the budget?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
If there's no further discussion, all those in favor placing on the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it.
2018, 289, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a S&amp;C Vista Source Transfer Underground Distribution switchgear with Micro AT Model 330 from S&amp;C Electric Company, in an amount not to exceed $62,641 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move to consent.
Second. Motion and a second for consent. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it.
2018, 290, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of replacement parts for Unit Four pulverizers from AMEC Foster Wheeler North American Corporation, in an amount not to exceed $68,058 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Motion for consent.
Second. There's a motion and a second for consent. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
2018, 291, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of boiler seal skirt and popcorn ash screens for Unit Four from MEC Foster Wheeler North American Corporation, in an amount not to exceed $179,290 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move to consent.
Second. There's a motion and a second for consent. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it.
2018, 292, an ordinance authorizing payment to the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency, in an amount of $294,000 for annual air pollution control, title Roman numeral B, permit fees for the Regulatory Affairs Division for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move to consent.
Motion and a second for consent. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it.
Public Safety, 2018, 293, an ordinance authorizing a supplemental appropriation in an amount of $34,000 for the Springfield Fire Department.
Move to consent.
Second. There's a motion and a second for consent. Any discussion? Alderman Hanauer.
This was a grant awarded, I guess, correct?
No, this was reimbursement money from the OSFM. It was for training that we got reimbursed for last year. Found money. It wasn't in the budget.
Okay. But it's not something that we are reimbursed, so we're good.
Yeah.
So, it's zero.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
I guess my question would be, why is it different than the amount of the check, which is $34,551?
That's a really good question. Probably because I told them $34,000.
Should we amend that amount?
We can certainly, I'm sorry, I apologize. No, we can certainly do that if that comports with the exact amount of the reimbursement.
That was the exact amount.
Normally, we would follow the department's request.
If it was, it got put into the line of, for training, we're just moving it to a consulting line. And that's...
I guess the question would go to Budget Management. Julie?
The $551 is not material. I just leave it up to the department. So we got the majority of the reimbursement, and he's seeking to supplementally appropriate all but $551. So that other $551 will technically go in fund balance. So, it's good either way.
If it's not supplementally appropriated, the city still gets it. It's simply not...
With no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. It's on the consent agenda.
Public Works, 2018, 294, an ordinance authorizing execution of a program funding agreement with the Illinois Housing Development Authority for grant funds in an amount of $75,000 for the abandoned residential property municipal relief program for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent.
Second. There's a motion and a second for consent. Discussion?
Yes.
Alderman Senor.
Can someone explain exactly how this program will work? Because we have quite a few abandoned houses in War II now, and this is what they do.
It's under, there's said guidelines, this is actually the third grant we receive that some money is available. We were able to get this, actually, OPEC had actually put in the grant, actually it was on the social level. So there's guidelines, you have to follow, there's so much to be before the demolition. And then the purchase, you have to work with sort of like what we give those other two is, I have to check on this one, but we work with like TSB Hope, some of their houses, they actually, they're trying to develop some of those houses. A lot of times their houses are already on our list for demolitions, and we try to work with the resources for that, or consider it while at the same time getting a little somebody's.
So this connected, this...
Director, can you pick up the microphone, please?
The other one.
The other one.
This, this pertaining to lots without a name, or these just abandoned lots?
Lots with houses, Autumn. Well, right. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
If no further discussion, all those in favor of the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it.
2018, 295, an ordinance authorizing repair and refurbishment of PW-80, a 2,000 International Grapple Truck from Monson Truck and Trailer Repair Incorporated, for an amount, total amount not to exceed $96,840.67 for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent.
Second. Motion and a second for consent agenda. Any discussion? Yes. Alderman Redpath.
So, does this fall out of the scope of our, of the city garage? Is that why we're paying this? I mean, I don't understand how come, how come we're going to a contractor?
The contractor's renovating the truck, basically rebuilding it. We actually had it, actually, Kim, sir, can speak better than I, but we had it at a vendor already, and it was already previously approved by the council as part of that equipment line that we had. Well, the problem is they went out of business. So we actually had to work through actually getting the truck, and we moved it over to the new vendor, and they're, actually, this is just, we have to do a new ordinance on it. So it was already pre-approved before.
It's something we don't do in-house, correct?
No, no, yeah, it's rebuilding, basically from the ground up, rebuilding it into a new truck, so.
If no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it for the consent agenda.
Finance, 2018, 296, an ordinance declaring miscellaneous items as surplus property and authorizing disposal of said surplus items by auction, sold for scrap, or recycled.
Move to consent.
Second. There's a motion and a second for consent. Any discussion? There's a long, this is a longer list of automobiles I think we've ever seen, about 30 automobiles. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
2018, 297, an ordinance authorizing acceptance of RFP BM-18-13 with Motor Parts and Equipment Corporation, doing business as NAPA Auto Parts, for a turnkey parts store operation for an amount not to exceed $4,950,000 from August 1, 2018 through July 31, 2021, for the Office of Budget and Management.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to lead this in committee, understanding that since the Budget Director is not here, we can discuss it next week.
Second. There's a motion and a second to hold in committee. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Any against? The ayes have it.
2018, 298, an ordinance authorizing execution of grant agreement CHDO #15-3 with King's Court LP, for the use of the city's home funds, in an amount not to exceed $158,000 for rehabilitation of property located at 2641 East Cook Street, through the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
Motion for consent.
Second. There's a motion and a second for consent. Any discussion? There be none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it. A week to the end already, Mr. Clerk.
We are, sir.
Way to run a meeting, Joe.
Well, we're not done yet. So moving to the next item on the agenda, we have any unfinished business?
Yes, please.
Alderman Tyland.
Mark, I've been getting emails today from different constituents that are in the Ward Eight area, and some Ward Nine and Ward 10, from other people who know me, asking if with the storm that went through last night, are we still going to see branch pickup? Or, you know, they're, they're questioning, because there was some extensive damage in some areas. What we've been telling people is, and we understand that, is to call our number, 789-2246, if it's significant storm damage. We'll come through. What we can't guarantee is how quickly we can get there. So it might be a few weeks or more before we get able to get a crew to pick them up. But we will get them if they can't get them, get rid of them. They just need to call that number, 789-2246, which is our regular dispatch number. And the other option is if they don't want to wait for us to come get them, they can always take them to Evans Recycling if they can. Some of the branches are pretty good size, and we understand they can't get rid of them, so we'll get those. Okay. And then the second one that I received, which I don't remember the pickup schedule, but I've got some constituents are complaining that they've stickered bags and they're not being picked up by the haulers.
Still?
They know that, they know that the free pickup's over. They've got stickers on their bags, and now they're afraid that with all the rain and everything else that's going on. One guy said that his bags blew all over last night.
We actually had a meeting this morning, reminded the housing inspectors to cite. If there's bags out there that are sitting, they'll be cited. So if you have residents, have them call us, and call our 789, the general number, but 2167 is housing. Housing will actually cite the waste hauler, and that gives the waste haulers five days to pick them up.
And if they sit longer than a week?
If it's longer than five business days, basically, yeah. So longer than a week, 789-2167.
And they need to name the hauler?
Yes, if they know the hauler, it's helpful. Otherwise, we'll just have to look it up.
Thank you.
Alderman Donlin.
He just answered my question. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. We're all getting those emails.
Yeah, we are all getting those emails. And I think at some point, we have to do something more to hold these haulers accountable, because this is out of control. If people are, their bags are sitting for four weeks at a time, they're stickered, and they're not being taken.
I would agree, but it would take a code change to do that, because the way it's set up, it's, so what will happen is, we'll go out there, we'll cite them, we'll send them a citation. And what they'll do, I think, a lot of times they use that as their list, sometimes, and they'll go pick them up. So as long as they correct the problem, which is remove the yard waste, they're in compliance. So it's kind of, I don't want to say a cat and mouse game, but a little bit of that, so.
So why don't we reconsider the wage increase we just gave them, the rate increase? I didn't see. Why don't we, why don't we reconsider that? I mean, as soon as they got the rate increase, it's gotten worse?
I, yeah, I don't know if I'd say it's going to work. It's always been an issue we had to deal with. But I mean, the rate increase, you have to accept that, so.
Alder Turner, then Alder Proctor.
I totally agree with you, because when we were talking about the rate increase for about three months, the haulers came in here, and we met with them, and they were like, yes, we're going to do this, this, and this, and we're going to do all these great things. And as soon as we voted for the rate increase, they quit doing anything and everything that they said they were going to do. And I, and I, I can't speak for anybody else, but I can speak for myself. The only reason why I voted for that rate increase was two things that they said they were going to do. And neither one of those two things is happening. So I think that we definitely have to do something to hold them accountable. I know we can't go, I know we can't retract the rate increase, I'm not suggesting that, but we have to do something, because they just basically came in here and played all of us.
Well, from an enforcement standpoint, there are some items, this is one of them, that we have had some conversations with the code enforcement. Some more teeth in some of those ordinances would be helpful in dealing with some of these issues. Because it's kind of like, they, they know there's not really a lot of, one issue, we go round and round in areas where the garbage is supposed to be in the alley as opposed to in front, and the waste hauler is telling them to put it in front or they won't pick it up. So we'll get residents to call us and say, hey, I want to put my garbage in back, and I know it should be in back. But there's really no enforcement mechanism, other than us going after the resident, which seems just ridiculous, because they're trying to do the right thing, and their waste hauler is telling them differently.
And other things, too, if that's the case, I would be willing to sit down and meet with you to talk about what, which of those ordinances that we need to address, and I'd be willing to put in, you know, ordinances to address those, because I just don't think that is fair. I had someone call me yesterday, saying, you know, that they, their payments increased them out, and they're still not getting the services that they promised. And that's not fair to, to constituents. So I'd be willing to sit down and talk to them about that.
Okay, definitely. We'll set up a meeting with Rean Housing as well.
Okay, please, please do.
Alderman Proctor. Yeah, and I think part of that great discussion we had was reporting flydumps. If they see it, has any trash haulers sent in reports to your department about flydumps?
Some do periodically. I wouldn't say it's consistent. I shouldn't say that, I should check with housing, but every so often, we'll check with them. And they do get lists from time to time. It's more of like, there's, it's flydumps, again, that we just added, we have to go pick it up.
They make me talk about doing it monthly, didn't they? When they are supposed to be out there, send those reports in?
Yes.
They're supposed to do it periodically. The idea is, if they see it out there, on a weekly basis, it'd be helpful if they turned it over to us, because then we have to assign it to our solid waste crew to go pick up, so.
Well, I'd love to be part of the discussion, do any of that, put more teeth in the code.
And I can check with, with housing and see how often they're getting those reports. But it seems like somewhat sporadic.
Thank you.
Alderman Redpath and Alderman Donlin.
Corporation Council, is there a way that we can rescind the rate increase? As, with the city council approval? If we bring in ordinance to change it, can we do that?
The rates are adopted by ordinance and are subject to amendment?
Then we need to consider that, Mark, because I want to tell you something. Not happy, and I know all these folks around this horseshoe is not happy. And these guys played us, and doors hit right on the head. They came in here, played this game, and then all of a sudden, everything went south. And we really need to think about this. And I'm willing to sponsor the ordinance if we need to. I'm, my people are not happy. I know everybody's got the same response.
Thank you. Alderman Donlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Alderman Turner, can I ask you a question, without naming names? Is it one hauler in particular? Because the reason I ask is, every time I get a complaint, I've had a complaint on each one of these issues that we've discussed this evening, it's, for me, at least in Ward Nine, it's always the same hauler.
You know, there is one hauler that the name comes up more often than the others.
Okay. And do you mind if I participate in those discussions?
No, no, no.
Because it's something near and dear to my heart. It's, you know, it's constant. I got a lady called me a couple days ago, and she's actually sending me a copy, she doesn't have, she doesn't have the ability to scan in the bill, she's going to send me a copy of the bill. She thinks she's even being overcharged, so.
No, not at all.
Yeah, what has happened recently, if they're a Republic customer, is Republic raised their rates to the maximum. They were below it, actually, before. It was like $42, I think they were pitched for the quarter. So they were meeting that, that threshold, below that threshold. So they sent a letter out and notified them. We weren't aware of it, but they raised, which they entirely can do, because they were below the cap, they raised it to the cap. Because we fielded a few of those phone calls. So if you'd sent it to us, we'll check, but probably most likely, that's probably what happened. And I will say, from, at least from a housing, from a public works standpoint, we get complaints on all the haulers. It's, sometimes it's different stuff, more so than others, but they're pretty, pretty well, fairly spread around, I guess you'd say, so.
Well, the code is pretty darn clear. Hauler's supposed to pick up stickered bags. If they're not stickered, they're supposed to pick them up anyway, and then bill the customer. As a matter of fact, Alderman, I did that for a reason. You were Alderman at the time when we, I think it's a higher fee.
And they've all been, we sent out, once the free collection was over, we had some, some issues with the way we set up the free collections spring, as we all know, but once that was over, an email was sent out to them, I think I forwarded it to everybody, just notifying them that it's time to pick up again. them that it's time to pick up again. So they're on notice, they know that weekly, they need to collect those.
And I can take this opportunity, your staff has, any issue that's come up, they've been over backwards to try to resolve it and help out, and I really appreciate it, because a lot of times, people call, and they're just not happy, and it turns out that 99 times out of 100, the hauler just isn't doing something correctly. Thank you.
Jumping on the same bandwagon, I wasn't going to mention this, Mark, but this will help your hit list. There's a waste hauler that was routinely picking up garbage before 6:00 a.m. Our city code says it's got to be no earlier than 6:00 a.m., and you might recall, a year ago, we worked through your office, and you notified the waste hauler to quit picking up before 6:00 a.m. It was commercial dumpsters, making loud noises in a residential area. They didn't comply, they didn't respect your request, and then we got to our legal department, thank you, Corporation Council, Jim Zirkle's staff, and we levied a fine on that hauler. I think it was a pretty hefty fine, a thousand bucks or so. And now that same hauler, it may be a different driver, different truck, but that same hauler is back at the same location on Montana Drive, and I've asked the resident to maintain her log, and she's got two weeks in a row where it's before 6:00 a.m. So I'll send you that information, and you can add that to your hit list, Mark.
Okay, yes, send along, we'll deal with it accordingly.
Thank you very much. So we've had a discussion about the waste haulers, and we're still in unfinished business. Any further unfinished business on the agenda? Alderman Redpath.
Mr. Chairman, I know the mayor's still gone, but maybe Deputy Mayor Bonnie Drew can answer this. We're getting a lot of complaints about the homeless situation around the library. We're talking about people having to walk through feces, and urine, and bags, and it's out of control. Does the mayor have a plan on how we're going to straighten that mess up?
We have the police department, Director O'Hara at the library. We are all aware of the issue that's going on. We have been reaching out to the social service agencies, and we've been working with them. We're trying to work through the issues, because it is a top topic.
It's out of control, and frankly, the people don't want to go to the library, and Will does a marvelous job. I'm very pleased with his work, but people don't want to go to the library, because they have to go through the gauntlet there every day.
Absolutely.
Had a lady tell me that she moved up here from St. Louis, and she's never seen such a problem, walking down the streets of downtown Springfield. It's ridiculous. We've got to do something.
Absolutely. I agree.
I'll end up piggyback on Alderman Redpath. The Fifth Street, Fifth and Monroe, that particular corner, all four corners are having reports of human feces. People are, you come to work in the morning, and there it is. Also, the old State Capitol Square area, that nice area that they've got the tables and things, they're finding, they're having intermittent reports of problems there as well. I mean, do we need to go, I know we talked about, once upon a time, I know that some people have come forward about trying to find a way for restrooms or something, but, you know, this isn't what we need. You know, we need to address this. We're right in the middle of, not only is it bad for the people who are coming to the area, who are trying to get to work, trying to, you know, do their everyday thing, but you've also got a problem right now, that we are in the height of our tourist season, too, and we don't need that, somebody going back to their home community and saying that, literally, there was, you know, human feces everywhere on the old State Capitol Square.
We are very well aware of the problem, and we're trying to work through it. We have reached out to all the social service agency, and I know Director Warta has worked with them as well. Right now, we don't have, the hot team, I know, is working diligently, trying to make some progress in that area. We are, we're not ignoring it, we're working with it, but it's a slow process.
Perhaps we need to post signs of no loitering after 10:00 p.m., or no sleeping in the reclined position. We've got to come up with some posted rules that would allow inappropriate activity to cease.
Alderman Donald?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, years ago, this isn't the first time this is a problem, at that very site, when I recall, the signs indeed were posted. It was at a certain time in the evening. I don't know if they're still out there or not. If they are, the signs should be, the rule should be enforced. But also, the city provided, one of the arguments was that the homeless population didn't have a place to put their items, their bags or what have you, and so someone always had to be there to watch the items. And the city provided, got a storage pod, and provided lockers for individuals that needed it, and we had staff there in the morning to open the lockers. This is when the overflow shelter was not open, so like, this time of the year, the lockers would be made available in the morning, and then in the evening, just before dusk. And I don't know whatever happened to that program, those two things. I don't know, you might want to check and see if the signs are up, and see what happened with that program, because it seemed like it was working.
We have discussed several different things, signage, changing lights, lots of other things. I know one of the issues with the bagged items includes the safety issue concerning bedbugs. And I know we're having a meeting, Alderman Proctor and several others, within the next couple of days concerning that issue, but that is one of the issues and one of the reasons that social agencies are, the social agencies are kind of spearheading against that, because it's just spreading that infestation that we have to deal with. But anything is, anything is open right now, because we are trying to find a solution.
Do others wish to comment? Alderman Proctor?
Yeah, I got three things. What social service groups have you reached out about?
I know we've been working with Helping Hands, that's the main one, and then I think just all of them.
All right. Because this issue always comes up, every single time. We always say there's a plan working. We present ideas, and then we just never seem, try never seem to leave the station. And so I like the status of the, you mentioned the hot team, you mentioned that the hot team is operating. I've been told that right now, it's not operating, because of this kind of fragment. We need one police officer, who's designated as the hot officer, the homeless outreach team officer, who can help deal with these issues. I'd like to know what the status is of getting that appointed officer, and also, the status of day center. I hate to use that word, term of day center, but we need a resource that these individuals can go during the day, so they can be in touch with these resources. Like, one of the greatest blessings of the winter warming shelter, not only saving lives, but the social service groups knew where to reach out these individuals to help them move along, find a place to get the medication and stuff. But once that place closed, the whole fragment moved throughout the community, and they lost contact. We're in discussions to keep that place open during the day. The mayor's in favor of it, it seemed like we're getting ready to go, and then all of a sudden, we got a call saying it wasn't going to happen. And I like to know why. I never did get a good reason. And I'm sorry, Bonnie, to put you on the spot here, it'll be the same if the mayor was here, but it's just, it's so frustrating, you know, the same stuff over and over again, and we always seem to have ideas to do it forward, and then we hit a brick wall for some reason, and I like to know why.
And sometimes, we do hit a brick wall where, I don't want to call any names, because I don't know any specific names, but sometimes, we'll hit a wall where it comes to budgeting, actually finding a facility, who's going to...
The money was there for this, and we had conversations and plans to do it forward, and it's, so I really like to know why. Feel free to talk to it, if you like, it's just, it's like vicious.
And another issue is, too, a lot of times in the summertime, individuals like the freedom of being outside, and that's another issue as well. But I will try to get you the resource officer's name, we'll give you an update on the hot team, and we'll see where exactly we're at on the day center.
Thank you.
Okay.
Normally, we'd wait till number nine for Reggie to speak, but if you want to make some brief comments now, because we've just talked about it, you can have the podium.
For one, when I came up here, what, a couple months ago, explaining this situation, y'all thought it was going to be somewhere to be worked at. I explained to y'all, we need that day center SOS open all year round, but people kept saying they didn't have the money. Then when I came up here and said I had the solution for a day center, and I'm working with Susan, we supposed to have a big meeting, we can talk about it, with all the programs, and the life skills, and the programs, but y'all put it under the rug. Then I'm sitting up here, I've been dealing with Will on the side, we've been also over here at the church, Susan, me, and Tim, we was asking, and put it on Facebook, that we wanted some lockers, that we could get rid of this program. Susan said that we could put the lockers in the basement of the church, and we came up with a solution, that we would be able to oversee that, the lockers, where they could put their stuff at, open it up in the morning, and then open it up at night. But nobody wanted to sit down and talk to me, that we can have a program to get this started. I had the solution in my head all along, and I'm trying to bring it to you and let y'all be a part of this program, but everybody put it on the rug, and I'm tired of it. And then, at night, I know about, I asked into y'all, talking about, man, let's try to get these party parties out here before SOS closed. I came up with a solution. I was told that Happy Hand SOS supposed to have a party party over there. They're supposed to go over there when it closed, they can get it off the library. Do I like them uniting around the library? No. Do I like them uniting around the police station? No. Do I like them uniting in Alice? No. Do I like them uniting over there on the church, the Presbyterian Church, on the side on Capitol Street? I knew about all that. I ride with my bikes through there until 10:00 at night, trying to stop it. It's time, y'all to step up and sit down and talk to me, Susan, and Tim, and we can put a net to this. We need to come together as a community, not separated. Stop putting it under the rug, because it's only going to get worse.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
We're still in number seven unfinished business. Last meeting, we discussed decorum at the city council meetings, and I think that's an important topic to discuss, and I'd like to provide my apology to the city council and to the public for speaking out of turn and so forth. It's unacceptable. I'd like to apologize to our chairman and to our vice chairman that night. I've attended 400 meetings of the city council during my time, and committed to hold meetings and that kind of thing, 400 meetings. I don't recall that ever happening before, but just one time is unacceptable, so I'm committed to making sure it doesn't happen again, and I just wanted to state that publicly, right here, right now. So we're still on unfinished business. I think there's some issues that are worthy of discussion that prompted that situation two weeks ago, and I'll talk about that at some other time in a different kind of a way. Any further unfinished business? If there are not, then we'll go to new business, any new business. Alder, descend.
Thank you. Bonnie, I'm not sure if you're the person to talk to, or Cassandra is the person to talk to, but as far as, we have a new crop of vacant lots that are going to be coming up. Can anyone speak to that? Thank you. And you and I have gone back and forth on this. We have got to make this process easier, and we have to make it more transparent. The last round of vacant lots that went out, people didn't even know they were going out. I have a couple that is begging to buy a lot. You know about this, and it's painful to watch, because probably no one else is going to want this lot, and they're ready to go right now, and we, as a city, are not making it easy for them to buy this lot.
Right, and I agree in that instance, and we have a lot of them. I was just talking to one of the aldermen, and we get, I get a call almost every day about lots to be purchased, but unfortunately, as you know, we have policies, and currently, we have to gather the surplus lots, we get those from Public Works, then we have to declare them surplus, which goes through council, and then we do an RFP. Since my time here, we haven't done one. This is the first that we did in March. So once we did that, now we're waiting. We have to wait until it gets approved, before we can move forward, before we can put out another RFP. I would like to move faster, and I would like to be able to help, but just based off our policies, I don't know if that's something that we need to look at, and see if we can adjust anything, or just get a better timeline. We waited a long time. We have over 200 properties right now.
That we need off our tax rolls. And Val, I don't know, Director, I don't know if you can address this, how many did we sell from the last round? Or Cassandra?
Oh, yes. We had about 34 interested property on that list. And then I have a growing list. Anyone that calls, I take all their information and email, because we do email anyone that is interested, as soon as that list goes out. So if we know of interest, we are keeping a file on it, including what address they would like, so that way, when it comes up, because some of them, we don't have yet, the same economy still have them, we will contact them when it does come out.
And if there's anything we can do as a body to expedite this process, make it easier, make it easier on you, I am happy to have that conversation.
Yeah, it is something I'd like to look at. I just, I mean, it'd be a matter of speaking with legal and finding out if there's other ways that we can do it. There's only one other way I know of at the moment, and it's like an 80% rule, and I think I've discussed it with you, where we have to have an appraisal done, and that's a holdup, because some of these people don't necessarily want to pay for an appraisal, not knowing what the lot's going to cost, and getting stuck with that cost. So if we can find a better way, I'd like to look into it. At this point, I'm just not sure how we can do it, but I will look into it.
Alder Henauer, then Alder Turner.
Thank you. Well, I agree, I think we need to look at, if there's something that, with our procedures, our rules, our policies, then let's change them, because to me, if we've got 200 lots, it'll take us 200 years to get those off our tax rolls. We should be able to put them out, and let people bid on them, and right now, here's the, they're costing us money, so it's, with us having to pay for the upkeep, with us, you know, so why do we even have to worry about an appraisal for it? We should, right now, it's not worth a dollar to us, it's costing us money. And if somebody wants to buy the lot that's next to them, I don't, we've got to simplify. I agree with you, I agree 100%, and put a list out there, let people come, if they want to, if they want to put a bid in on it, I mean, it's a simple, it'd be a very simple process. And then the ones we don't have bids on, then we do that in a couple months or something, but I think we're just making, we make this a lot harder than it needs to be, so.
I just think it would have to be some sort of policy or code change, but I'm more than willing to...
Let's do it.
Write it up, and then we'll put it in ordinance form, we'll get it due.
Alder Turner, then Alder Redpath, then Alder Señor.
I agree with you, but I think, let me be in a position of defending it, but in defense of the program, I think that oftentimes, the public gets confused as well, because, you know, you have multiple sales going on simultaneously, so people don't understand if it's the city lot, or if it's part of the county tax sale. So all of that gets to be very confusing, and sometimes, we get hit by something that's actually, you know, part of the county tax sale. So I think that there's a lot of confusion going on. So maybe you guys are ready to do the next sale, if there's something, number one, if there's something we could do, where we could do, do it more frequently, that would be great. But then, also, if there's like a one pager fact sheet or something that you guys could put together, that we could distribute, like neighborhood association meetings, or put it in a social media, so that people have more of an understanding of what the program is, and what it's not. You know, so I just think that if people have more information, it would be a little bit easier. And then if you could also give us kind of an advance notice, then we could help get that information out to the players, and that would make all this available. Because, I mean, I understand that there may be some tweaking to do with the program, but I think if we do those simple things, that would help make your job survive.
Alder Redpath.
I guess I'm confused with, you know, the appraisal process part of it. I mean, I'm hearing what everybody's saying here, but, you know, these properties have been off the rolls for so darn long, we should just be opening up the bids.
There's no comps even available.
What?
There's no comps to, there's no comparable...
Who cares?
Well, that's what I'm saying.
You know, the bottom line is, the bottom line is that they're doing the taxpayers and the city no good. I mean, alls we're doing is paying to clean them up all the time. We got people, I know some people in Doris and Herman's Ward, they're right next door to the property. They'll said, let me buy it, and I'll clean it up and put it on the tax rolls. So it's not your fault, but like Ralph said, if there's a process, who cares about the appraisal? We're not, nobody wants to buy them, or they'd be beating our door down. So put it out for a bid, say, give us the highest bidder, and give it to them.
Well, we do do RFP. The thing is, it's not necessarily frequent enough for the people. It's been three years since we put one out. So typically, I think they used to do them once a year. For some reason, the process got put on hold, but now, we're starting to do it again. So once this one wraps up, we would like to put the next one out. It's just, the 80% is for those that don't want to wait for the RFP process and want to acquire it sooner.
We got to think outside the box. We got to stop the old process. It's not working. We got to think outside the box. We got to find a better way to do this. Everybody believes that. It's not your fault, but we got, we need to put some minds together here and figure this thing out. Get those things off our backs, because it costs Public Works to go out and mow them every time we have to turn around, and then we put them back on the tax rolls, somebody else is mowing them, and they're paying taxes on. So we got to figure this out. We got to think outside the box.
Alder Señor, then Alder Henauer.
We was reading his notes. Mark, how much does it cost us to get, to every time we send the crew out to mow? What's the, what can we approximate?
Most of those lots are probably contracted out, so anywhere from $60 up from there. So the typical lot, $60 to $90 probably.
Times 200. Times 200. That's why, it's, we've got to get something out every quarter at least. I mean, we need to get...
Every month, these lots are going from $1 to $500.
We just got to try something else. And whatever we can do, I mean, I agree, I just, it's costing the city the money that we don't need to spend, really, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional new business items? If there are none...
Chair McMillman, can I say something?
Frasier. Misty Boucher.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to announce that the Illinois Municipal Treasures Association just had their annual meeting in Springfield, Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday, and we put 114 beds in the Crown Plaza, so.
And they came to Springfield, because you asked them to come?
Yes, I asked them, could they please come to Springfield, and they did.
Thank you, Treasurer, for promoting Springfield. Any additional new business? If none, citizen request to address committee, former Alderman Bob Vose, former Ward 5 Alderman Bob Vose, which... Alderman Bob Voss wishes to make some comments.
Bob Voss, I was former alderman, Ward Five, served 12 years. I'm here to try to get an answer to a 30-year program with the weeds along the railroad tracks, not only the Third Street Quarter, the 15th Street Quarter, C and I M Railroad, and the rest of them. Why can't we have this grass cut? The railroad, for years, I fought to get them done, to come in and cut it, and they would only do it once or twice a year. I know the fellows that had the contract, and that's all they were allowed. Why does the city, still today, let the railroad run over them? I'm here to ask, find some answers, and I would like to know why. I had Channel 20 out at the weeds, here we found a homeless man sleeping in the weeds along the railroad track. This is baloney for a city, a capital of Illinois, having this kind of crash within a couple, three blocks of our main downtown area, Lincoln Home, Lincoln's Tomb, they're not too far from there. Why? Give me an answer. I asked for the city attorney to give me a list that showed that where the city has got a signed contract with the railroad to cut this grass. Show it to me. Come on. Where's the city attorney? Where's he at? Jim, where's he at? This is no game. Jim Zirkel?
I think, I was going to say that I think Mark had sent some emails around about the question about the contract, and the city, it's my understanding, does not have a contract with the railroad.
This was just last year, Jim, you said you had the contract signed. That man back there lied to me. Mark, where you at? You lied to me, and you lied again. And I'm here to try, try to get something done. I'm 90 years old, but I still take, took an interest in my north end of town. When I was there, I had very few phone calls. When somebody called me, we went out. I had a good representative from the street department, Jim, 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 uh-
Flack.
Uh, Jim Flack, Jim Flack Busher, Busher. He called me and we said, let's go look at it, we need to look at this. I spent from 20 to 25 hours every month in my ward, up and down the alleys, down this, seeing this had to be done. I done it. Then I come to find out that our great, uh, uh, street department superintendent was always grabbing my request and sticking them in his desk and piling them up, and he took care of wards eight, nine, and 10. So, Mr., Mr. Mark, come up and give me some answers.
Thank you, Mr. Voss, and Director Mahoney's, I'm sure, can offer some insight of what's happening?
Yeah, on the railroad mowing, we did a couple, last, well, probably two years ago or so, discussed, tried to get a contract with the railroad. Actually, Alderman Proctor provided us with an example, actually, we provided them. We never came to an agreement with the railroad, and a lot of what Mr. Voss is saying is true. We can't count on the railroad, a lot of times, to respond and take care of what they're responsible for taking care of. So the decision was made to take a different approach, is to move forward with citing them, just like we would anybody else. So this year, we actually, I have the copies of citations, the UP corridor on the Third Street, we cited them May 24th. The, one of the things that they, they did, they have going on right now, you see them doing the work on their corridor and the fencing and that kind of stuff, so you'll see a lot of dead growth through there, where they've done spraying, some of the sites where we, they did go mow that we requested they mow. There's a couple of questions that Mr. Voss is correct, they're, actually, the property where they have their yard is a mess. We actually put our crews, sent our crews over there to access it, to mow it, and we were told to get off the property. So we're working with our contact at UP to access that property. The other part of this is also, the, the fencing is going to be an issue, we know that, we knew that too, trying to figure out how we take care of that. They put in areas where they're locked, and we can't access that, and we know it's going to be a problem going forward. So it, it is a challenge to, to address it, and we're trying to do our best, following the code citations, is probably the best thing to do. Now, the property that Channel 20 actually had the, the, their press conference or whatever on yesterday, actually is not railroad property. It's actually owned by an individual, and we've cited them, it was in the process, they were cited, and they actually, I think they mowed it today and cleaned that up, but it's private property. So, there's a lot of moving targets with the railroad stuff, and I, I agree with him, it's always a pain to deal with-
You lied to me. You lied to me. Yes, and you have the contract signed last year. Where is it at? You ain't done a damn thing.
Well, Alder-
That's the job to do, to get somebody that wants to do the job, got some guts like I have. Why don't you resign, let somebody else get in there. I've addressed the mayor too, he's the table. Anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Voss, for caring so much about the north end, and I'm sure we'll do the best we can as a city to respect your points of view on this. Does anyone else have any further citizen requests?
Sorry, I thought I was loud enough. I guess not, since I got this sore throat. When I bought a lot in my neighborhood for two reasons. One, I had a hard time getting somebody to mow it. Second, I bought it for the neighborhood association. Now, I mow it. I also mowed the hill behind my lot, which is a railroad mow, okay? I take care of that. I think these ladies that work in Mark Mahoney's office knows my voice by now, and they'll say, yes, Alice, we'll get to it right away, because I have called them on this lots. Now, the people you're hiring and giving contracts to that are both to mow these lots, I don't know where they came from, but they sure didn't come from Springfield, because they don't know how to mow. And they don't pick up the stuff. I end up with it all in my yard. And another thing is, every night, I hear a boom. I didn't tell the chief yet, but I hear a boom every night, three or four booms, just like somebody's practicing for bomb day or something. But I think it's wrong. Now, the garbage people that I have, I don't have a problem. They pick up my bags like they're supposed to. They did not pick up one lady's on Livingston, because she didn't have no tags on it, but they did come out and pick them up. We got new bags for the lady, she had a hard time doing it, so we got new bags for them, and we got them all put together. And to all of us, including, I have a very fond memory of the north end. I lived in the north end until I was 14 years old and rode my horse every day. So you see, I know this neighborhood, and I know the town, and I think it's bad. And this gentleman came up and talked to you guys about the homeless, y'all put it under the table, just like everything else. He asked for party parties, which I think would be an ideal thing, but you have to figure out where to put them. And you also got homeless that don't give a darn, okay, where they go. Some of them don't care, because they can't stand to be inside or cooped up, for whatever the reason may be. We have to settle this, because this is the capital of Illinois, and it's Abe Lincoln's home. Until you, people realize that you can't put it under the table, or ship it in 13, file, or just say, hey, we can't do it right now, we don't have the money. Well, you do have to get the money, because these people are getting tired of walking on shit. Do you understand? Thank you, guys, and have a beautiful day.
Any further citizen requests to address the committee? If there are none, any executive session, Mr. C. Attorney?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Some of them.
Alls in favor, say aye.
Aye.